Good morning.
Lake County Council meeting now in session. Please rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge allegiance. During your moment of silence, if you would, please keep our correctional officer Ronald Jones family up in your thoughts. He passed away recently. Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to the Super Bowl now. Win one, win one.
Roll call, please, Madam Secretary.
First District David Ham.
Here.
Second District Ronald Brewer.
Thank you.
Third District Charlie Brown.
He's on line. He's muted.
Fourth District Pete Lindemolder.
Present.
Fifth District Christine Sead.
Here.
Sixth District Ted Bowsky.
Here.
Seventh District Randy Meyer.
Present.
Thank you. Okay, the minutes. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes of September ninth, twenty twenty five. Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, six, one absent. Are we able to hear Charlie yet? Did he?
He's muted.
Okay.
Charlie unmute yourself.
Our speaker is working this month?
Who does?
Okay. I don't know if his. Okay, resolution in support of October as breast cancer awareness month.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve. I'm gonna read it into the record. Whereas breast cancer affects millions of women and men and their families either directly or through someone they know. And currently, there are approximately four women, four million women in the United States with the history of breast cancer who are presently being treated or who finished with their treatment. And whereas about fifteen percent of women with breast cancer have family members who have been diagnosed. And about eighty-five percent of breast cancer occurs in women with a family, with no family history. And whereas in twenty twenty five, the American Cancer Society estimates three hundred and sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty women and two thousand eight hundred men will be diagnosed with breast cancer. And an estimated forty-two thousand six hundred and eighty women will die from breast cancer in twenty twenty five. And whereas public awareness and education enhance a community's understanding of the need for early detection as well an understanding of the issues affecting those with breast cancer. And whereas, thanks to awareness and advances in research, the five-year survival rate has climbed from sixty-seven point five percent in nineteen eighty-five, when October was first declared Breast Cancer Awareness Month to ninety-one point two percent today. And whereas the American Cancer Society Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Fundraiser is a celebration of courage and hope of movement uniting communities to end breast cancer as we know it. For everyone, and it's the nation's largest and most impactful breast cancer fundraiser walk. And on October twelfth, twenty twenty five, Making Strides of Northwest Indiana, presented by Hard Rock Casino of Northwest Indiana, held its fundraiser walk at the Lake County Fairgrounds to raise funds in support breast cancer research. American Cancer Society Program and Services. And whereas, the Lake County Council continues to support October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in an effort to increase public awareness and education of breast cancer. Now therefore, let it be resolved as follows at the Lake County Council hereby proclaims the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and recognizes Making Strides of Northwest Indiana in its efforts to fight breast cancer. So resolve this fourteenth day of twenty twenty five, Lake County Council. And I'd like to call to accept this is Nicole Otis of American Society Making Strides. Nicole, thank you for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you have a few words to say? We just would like to say thank you to everyone who supports the Making Strides, it's Breast Cancer Walk. It is an annual event. We have the second Sunday in October every year at the Lake County Fairground. And every dollar raised is put back into the cause, whether it be through research or providing services to those struggling and fighting against cancer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from the council? There's a motion and there's a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, next acknowledgements. Uh, we're, I've been asked to defer item A. I was, I don't really need a deferment on that, so. Uh, I want to congratulations to Lake County Assessor Latonya Spearman, who was named Assessor of the Year for Indiana's Northwest District at the constant Conference of the Indiana County Assessors Association. Congratulations, Latonya, to you and your team. Congratulations to Lake County Surveyor Bill Emerson, Jr. In the Lake County Surveyor's Office for receiving the twenty twenty five Excellence in Stormwater Management Award from the Indiana Association Floodplain and Stormwater Management. Thank you both for all your hard work. Okay, Drainage Board.
Madam President, I make the motion to approve an appropriations Drainage Board Improvement Fund seventeen ninety six-three-one-six-zero Little Cal River twenty-five thousand and six-four well, engineering six-four-five-two-zero Little Cal River Construction, two million six hundred thousand sixty-five dollars forty-six cents. For a total of two million six hundred twenty-five thousand sixty-five dollars forty-six cents.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
Discussion. Um, there is, and I know this is Little Cal River stuff, but there is a ongoing stormwater issue in, in my district, flooding issue along state line um, in Hanover Township. I think that's been going on for many, many years. And Bill and I had talked about it some time ago. He said there was gonna be some potential engineering contracts considered at Drainage Board meetings. I just haven't heard any update on that.
We currently, yes, we currently have American Structure Point. Last Friday, they reached out to I M and the Army Corps of Engineers.
Okay.
For pre-meetings to that one area that is significantly west. If that is draining, we're gonna have to mitigate it. And mitigation goes through I M and the Army Corps, so we reached out to them for pre-meetings. Uh, and there are some, some areas that I just from Structure Point for the reconstruction of that.
Yeah, it's been there about the last thirty years, I think, or so.
At least, the twenty-eight.
Yeah.
And ninety-seven, it was the first project that I walked, saved by the government.
Okay, no, thank you. I just wanted a little update on that while you guys prepare. Thanks. Appreciate it.
All right, okay. Any further discussion?
You can't see the ends.
Just trying to do that, so. This is Tori.
I think they're working on Charlie.
Okay.
I'm on with Charlie now. I'm sorry. He's, he's having some issues muting and unmuting.
If you'd be willing, maybe to have the votes so we can progress until he gets the sound we call on his cell phone and he can just, you can indicate the R and A on the cell.
I think he's on his cell phone already.
He was.
Is he? I couldn't see. Yeah, sure looks like it.
Is it? It's not his landline? He was having problems with his cell phone. Okay. All right, so, um, we have enough to pass. Um, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Oh, this is an appropriation. I need a roll call.
Pam?
Yes.
Lindemolder?
Yes.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Me Meyer?
Yes.
Brown?
We're gonna pass with, without him right now. Sead? Yes, motion passes. Uh, one, two, three, five, yes. One absent and one's muted.
One inaudible.
One inaudible. I'm sure Charlie would vote in favor. All right, Calumet Township Assessor. If he can hear us, he's coming. Not or.
If he's up or down, yeah, your name. I might try to make a motion to approve a transfer from County General from six-one-one-one-zero Officials and Administration of twenty thousand dollars to six-one-two-five-zero certifications, a thousand dollars, six-two-one-one-zero Office Supplies, nine thousand. Other professional services, six-three-one-nine-zero of six thousand, travel and lodging of two thousand, and travel and mileage of two thousand for a total of twenty thousand dollars. So.
Second.
They did make adjustments to their budget for twenty-six, if anybody's.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're voting now on Calumet Township Assessor Transfer. Discussion's been held. Oh, all in favor signify. Charlie, are you voting in favor of this?
Yes.
Okay, so motion passes, six, one absent. Okay, Criminal Courts, Councilman Ham.
Madam Chair, Department thirty oh two, I have moved for approval of revised one forty-four out of the General Fund, effective ten twenty of this year. One-two-four-two-eight-dash-zero-one-three Probation Officer currently at forty-five thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars proposed at forty-two thousand three hundred and ten dollars. And one-two-four-two-eight-dash-zero-one-four Probation Officer currently at forty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars proposed at thirty-seven thousand three hundred and ten, three hundred and eleven dollars for a total difference of a negative seven thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Lindemolder?
Yes.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Me Meyer?
Yes.
Am?
Yes.
Sead?
Yes, motion passes, six, one absent.
Madam Chair, Department thirty oh three, I move to create a new line item in the jury fee fund, four-two-one-zero uh, six-three-one-nine-zero, other professional services.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Oh, just made this. Uh, roll call, please.
Yes.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Me Meyer?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Sead?
Yes, motion passes, six, one absent.
I move for a transfer in the jury fee fund, forty-two-ten.
Second.
From six-three-nine-two-two, per DM Pettit Jurors, three thousand dollars, to six-three-one-nine-zero, other professional services in the same amount.
Second, still good.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, six, one absent.
Madam Chair, in Department forty oh one, which is Lake County Spirit Court Four, I move for approval of a revised one forty-four in the County General Fund for one-five-five-two-eight-dash-zero-zero-three Probation Officer currently at seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars proposed at forty-five thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars for a difference of a negative thirty-two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Me Meyer?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lindemolder?
Yes.
Sead?
Yes, motion passes, six, one absent.
Madam Chair, Department forty oh two, I move for approval of a revised one forty-four in the General Fund one-five-five-two-eight-dash-zero-zero-two Probation Officer currently at fifty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars proposed at forty-two thousand three hundred and eleven dollars for a negative sixteen thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Me Meyer?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lindemolder?
Yes.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Sead?
Yes, motion passes, six, one absent.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Department forty oh four, which is County Courtroom Three, move for approval of an appropriation for problem-solving that court, which is nine-four-four-six. Six-one-one-nine-zero, part-time, three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, and six-one-three-two-zero, FICA deduction of two hundred and forty-four dollars.
Two hundred and forty-two.
Two hundred and forty-two dollars for a total of three thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Pam?
Yeah.
Brown?
Yes.
Lindemolder?
Yes.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Me Meyer?
Yes.
Sead?
Yes, motion passes, six, one absent.
Madam Chair, I move to create a new line item in the Lake County Court, Division Three. Uh, this is Veterans All Rise Mentor Court Network Fund, which is eighty-four-twenty. Six-two-one-one-zero Office Supplies.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Lindemolder?
Yes.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Me Meyer?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Sead?
Yes, motion passes, six, one absent.
Move for a transfer in the same department, the transfer uh, in front, eighty-four-twenty, from six-three-two-three-four Travel Transportation, another four dollars thirty-five cents to Office Supplies, which is the two-one-one-zero, all in the same amount.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor signify by, by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, six, one absent.
I think they're just keeping it open. Place there. Uh, Madam Chair, Juvenile Court, forty oh six, move for approval of grant applications.
Second.
Um, well, one is Indiana Supreme Court Administration fiscal year twenty twenty-six, Lake County CASA Program Capacity Building Grant, it's a renewal.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, six, one absent.
Madam Chair, move for approval with the allowing of renewal of another application, which is the Indiana Supreme Court Administration fiscal year twenty twenty-six, CASA Problem Matching Rating.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. This is a in-kind, um, match? Is anyone here on CASA? I don't, I asked this question prior to the meeting. I don't know if I received an answer. Is anyone online from CASA? All right, well, has to be. Okay, go ahead, Councilman. I mean, uh, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, six, one absent. Planning Commission.
Madam President, move to approve an ordinance number two-five-nine-one, Doug Lottis, owner, Nathan Vis, petitioner, nine-seventeen-twenty-five from A-one to RR, and have received a favorable recommendation, seven zero.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Lindemolder?
Yes.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Me Meyer?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Sead?
Yes, motion passes, six, one absent.
Madam President, move to approve ordinance number two-five-nine-two, Mike Schilling, owner, Mike Skirka, petitioner, nine-seventeen-twenty-five A-one to R-one, which had also received a favorable recommendation, seven of us.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Me Meyer?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lindemolder?
Yes.
Sead?
Yes, motion passes, six, one absent. Councilman Me Meyer.
Uh, Madam President, I move to approve, um, or I move to deny the ordinance petitions for establishment of posting stop signs at northbound Burr Street to stop for one hundred and thirteenth Avenue and southbound Burr Street to stop for one hundred and thirteenth Avenue.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? I wasn't here at the.
A yes vote is to deny. To deny, correct. That was requested by the Highway Department.
Okay.
Uh, they did the study on it and found that it was not a, a necessary installation.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, um, no further discussion, roll call, please.
Me Meyer?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lindemolder?
Yes.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Sead?
Yes, motion pa, motion passes, six, one absent. County Highway Fund. Councilman Me Meyer.
Uh, Madam President, I move to approve a resolution permitting the Lake County Highway Department to pay outstanding twenty twenty-four invoices slash debts from the twenty twenty-five budget.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Pam?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lindemolder?
Yes.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Me Meyer?
Yes.
Sead?
Yes, motion passes, six, one absent.
Uh, Madam President, I move to, uh, approve the creation of new line items Sheriff's Comprehensive Highway Injury Reduction Program Grant Fund nine-two-seven-five six-one-one-zero-zero overtime and six-one-one-one-zero officials and administrators.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Lindemolder?
Yes.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Me Meyer?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Sead?
Yes, motion passes, six, one absent.
I, uh, move to approve an appropriation in the Sheriff's Comprehensive Highway Injury Reduction Program Grant Fund nine-two-seven-five six-one-one-zero-zero overtime and six-one-one-one-zero officials and administrators. Overtime is fifty-three thousand officials, administrators, seven thousand nine hundred and fifty, or a total of sixty thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Lindemolder?
Yes.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Me Meyer?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Sead?
Yes, motion passes, six, one absent.
Madam President, I move to create a new line item in the Sheriff's Fiscal Year twenty-five Safe Narcan and Essentials Bag Grant Fund nine-three-three-zero, six-two-four-one-zero, other supplies.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Me Meyer?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lindemolder?
Yes.
Sead?
Yes, motion passes, six, one absent.
Madam President, I move, uh, to approve an appropriation in the Sheriff's Fiscal Year twenty-five Safe Narcan and Essentials Bag Grant Fund nine-three-three-zero, six-two-four-one-zero, other supplies, three thousand ninety dollars.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Me Meyer?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lindemolder?
Yes.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Sead?
Yes, motion passes, six, one absent.
Madam President, move to approve a resolution for the Prosecutor's Office, a resolution to approve a transfer of three thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-five cents from the Lake County Prosecutor's non-refering, reverting Rico Fund, fund number four-one-four-one-nine-zero-zero-one to the BAW Stop Grant Fund, fund number nine-three-three-five-nine-zero-zero-one.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Pam?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lindemolder?
Yes.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Me Meyer?
Yes.
Sead?
Yes, motion passes, six, one absent.
Sorry about that. Real quick on that, um, we should probably also, I just was speaking, Mr. Blanchard about this. We should also abolish that fund probably by ordinance next month, once you make that transfer.
Oh, okay.
Will Jacob do that?
Jake will do that, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, Madam President, um, move to approve a transfer for the criminal division public defender uh, transferred from the County General Fund, one-zero-zero-one, from six-three-one-nine-zero, other professional service, amount of six thousand dollars to six-two-one-one-zero Office Supplies in the amount of six thousand dollars.
There are second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes, six, one absent.
Madam President, I move to approve a transfer to County General Fund one thousand one from six-three-six-three-zero Maintenance and Service Con, Contracts three, three thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars to six-one-one-nine-zero, part-time, three thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, six, one absent.
Madam President, I move to approve a grant application, grant approval from the Grant Oversight Committee, Veterans Memorial Parkway Trail Phase One Broadway Bridge Engineering Group One, CMAQ, new grant application.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Madam President, I move to approve a transfer in the E-nine-one-one Operating Fund one-zero-one-four from six-one-one-four-zero Protective Services six-one-two-one-zero Longevity Deduction, well, I'm sorry, let me go back to Protective Services, two-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand six-one-two-one-zero Longevity Deduction, four thousand, six-one-two-three-seven Differential Pay, eighteen thousand six-two-one-one-zero Office Supplies, eleven thousand, six-three-one-five-zero Consultant Fees, one-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-two six-one-one-zero-zero Overtime, two-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand six-two-two-three-zero Clothing, eleven thousand, six-three-six-three-zero Maintenance and Service Contracts, one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand and six-three-nine-nine-five Other Services and Charges, thirty thousand, for a total of four-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand dollars.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, six, one absent. Councilman Me Meyer, be good, please.
Uh, Madam President, I move to approve a resolution permitting the Lake County Government HVAC Department to pay outstanding twenty twenty-four invoice slash debt from the twenty twenty-five budget.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Brown? Lindemolder?
Yes.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Me Meyer?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Sead?
Yes, motion passes, six, one absent.
Madam President, I move to approve an ordinance on first reading, amending the ordinance established in the Lake County Health Department Fees Ordinance Number one-three-three-six-A.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Lindemolder?
Yes.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Me Meyer?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Sead?
Yes, motion passes, six, one absent.
Madam President, I move to suspend the law for a second.
Yes, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Me Meyer?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lindemolder?
Yes.
Sead?
Yes, motion passes, six, one absent.
Madam President, I move to adopt, uh, an ordinance amending the ordinance establishing Lake County Health Department Fees Ordinance Number one-three-three-six-A.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor signify by aye. Discussion, all in favor, signify by I.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six one absent. Huh?
We need a roll call.
Oh, where are we at?
Second reading.
What did we do?
Oh. I thought we were on the transfer.
No, we're on the Health Department ordinance.
Second reading.
Oh, sorry, how did I miss that? Okay.
See echo coming back. I'd say you're doing a great job.
Just bitching other rules, okay.
No, we already suspended.
Yeah, I know, I hear it, okay, uh, roll call please.
Niemeyer.
Yes.
Pam.
Yeah.
Brown.
Yes.
Linda Mulder.
Yes.
Bowsky.
Yes.
Sid.
Yes, motion passes. Six one absent.
Madam President, I move for an appropriation in the County General Fund one thousand one. Six three five one zero utilities one million two hundred thousand.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, roll call please.
Pam.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Linda Mulder.
Yes.
Bowsky.
Yes.
Niemeyer.
Yes.
Sid.
Yes, motion passes six one absent.
Uh, Madam President, I move for a transfer in the County General Fund one thousand one from. Six one one eight zero service maintenance twenty six thousand to six one one nine zero part time twenty six thousand.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion, all in favor, signify by I.
Aye.
I opposed, motion passes six one absent.
Madam President, I move for a transfer to County General Fund one thousand one from six one one seven zero skilled craft workers forty two thousand. Six one one eight zero service maintenance nineteen thousand seven hundred ninety two to six one one nine zero part time sixty one thousand seven hundred ninety two.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion, all in favor, signify by I.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry, I was in favor, I was late.
Okay, that's okay, better late than never, right?
Yeah.
Motion passes six one absent. Okay. Uh, Councilman. Who would like to take the commissioners?
I'll take it.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move to approve an interlocal governmental agreement. It's a joint interlocal cooperation agreement between the River Forest Community School Corporation and Lake County, Indiana for equipment and improvements for River Forest High School Athletics. In Holberg Township, Lake County, Indiana.
Second.
Is this the?
Athletic.
Yeah, the athletic equipment?
Yes, was the Monsanto dollars, I believe, allocated to, uh, the commissioner for that area.
Yeah, was there a second? Yes, okay, yeah, I had some, I had some issues with this, um. As we had been cited in the past for. Uh. Giving monies to, um. You call we used to have a fund here and. We were written up for giving money to schools and that, so I've already spoken to Commissioner Allen about this, so, uh, no further discussion, roll call please.
Brown.
Yes.
Linda Mulder.
Yes.
Bowsky.
Yes.
Niemeyer.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Sid.
No, motion passes five yes, one no, and one absent.
Uh, Madam President, I move to approve a resolution permitting the Lake County Commissioners to pay outstanding twenty twenty four invoices from the twenty twenty five budget.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, roll call please.
Linda Mulder.
Yes.
Bowsky.
Yes.
Niemeyer.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Brown. Sid.
Yes, motion passes. Uh, six one absent.
Madam President, I move for an appropriation reduction in the County General Fund one thousand one six one three three zero perf deduction one million two hundred thousand.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, roll call please.
Bowsky.
Yes.
Niemeyer.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Brown. Linda Mulder.
Yes.
Sid.
Yes, motion passes six one absent.
Madam President, I move to approve a transfer in the County General Fund one thousand one. From six one one six zero office clerical forty thousand six three nine five eight public transportation sixty thousand. To six one three five zero unemployment, um. Compensation deduction sixty thousand and six three two two zero postage forty thousand per total of one hundred thousand.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, signify by I.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed, motion passes six one absent. Alright, County Council, um, twice isn't here.
I get, I'll give this to Dave, I've been talking too much.
Madam Chair. In Department sixty oh one, County Council, I move for approval of an ordinance repealing and rescinding ordinance number one four five one B. Adopted on October thirteenth of twenty twenty. The ordinance establishing the Lake County Council is the Lake County Purchasing Agent. Pursuant to Indiana Code thirty six dash one dash three point five dash five B. Right.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call please.
Niemeyer.
Yes.
Sam.
Yeah.
Brown.
Yes.
Linda Mulder.
Yes.
Bowsky.
Yes.
Sid.
Yes, motion passes six one absent.
Move for a suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, spend with the rules, roll call please.
Pam.
Yes.
Brown. Linda Mulder.
Yes.
Bowsky.
Yes.
Niemeyer.
Yes.
Sid.
Yes, motion passes six one absent.
Motion for approval on second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve on second reading, discussion. Roll call please.
Brown.
Charlie.
Can you hear me?
Can hear you now.
No.
Brown.
Yes.
Linda Mulder.
Yes.
Bowsky.
Yes.
Niemeyer.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Sid.
Yes, motion passes six one absent.
Yep. Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve an interlocal, a joint interlocal cooperation agreement between the town of New Chicago, Indiana and Lake County, Indiana. For the design remodeling and operation of municipal facility for the town of New Chicago. To carry out its duties and responsibilities under the Indiana law for the.
Motion, motion's been made and seconded, discussion. Roll call please.
Linda Mulder.
Yes.
Bowsky.
Yes.
Niemeyer.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Sid.
Yes, motion passes six one absent. Okay, citizens' appointments.
I, I sent Sue Peltry from New Chicago, so did you have anything?
We have something you would like to say, Sue?
On behalf of town manager me and, um, council, we should want to always like to thank you very much, so. We've been hurting pretty bad since April and, um, this will help us a lot, so, yeah, thank you.
Good luck moving forward. Glad to see this, uh, in process. Alright, citizens' appointments, we have the county domestic violence fatality review team. Um, the appointment is, I mean, I'll open up nominations at this time. For educator. Are there any nominations, someone, I know Andrea.
Andrea Graciano, uh, put a letter as I did book in my.
Yes, she, she's been a longstanding member, she also works for the Highland Police Department, their domestic violence team. Oh, over, sorry.
Move to three appoint Andrea Graciano.
Are there any other nominations, hearing none, I hereby appoint Andrea Graciano. To the county domestic violence fatality review team as educator. Uh, library boards. Mrs. Farlow.
Uh, Madam President, I nominate Daniel Fagan.
Let me open up nominations, thank you, uh, I hereby open up nominations, are there any nominations, go ahead, sorry.
Madam President, I nominate Daniel Fagan for a four year term.
Hearing no other nominations, I hereby appoint Daniel Fagan to the library vote, that's a low, thank you. Fourth, and that's more four year term, okay. Or is that, oh, that's filling a four year term, so just till October of, wait.
No, his, his last term started midterm. This one would be for a full four year.
This is October twenty twenty next appointment, oh, that's accurate, okay, gotcha.
Yep.
Filling on expired term.
That's right, started.
Alright, very good, all in favor, signify by I, oh, we didn't even vote, there may, sorry, okay, um, I do have one announcement before. I was short on the announcements that the, our veterans, the county's veteran ceremony will take place on Thursday, November thirteenth at noon. At twelve o'clock here in Building A. Second floor in front of the Veterans Memorial, while we honor where that is, okay, um, anybody have anything?
Madam President.
Yes.
Uh, today on our agenda, we approved, um. One point two million in additional utilities and it's been well publicized the difficulties that everyone's having in paying utility bills and I've done. Good bit of homework on this and I was on a radio show and Gary, uh, last week talking about this issue because it's. It's hitting families and businesses really hard, uh. Right now, the Indiana Code under Title Eight, I believe it's Article one point five. Um, currently allows municipal government. The ability to manage their own utilities even if. They are owned privately by people like Indiana American. Now, we all, I think, agree that electrical is a utility, right, it's something that we cannot necessarily function without unless you're completely off grid. Uh, and also we have a government regulated monopoly in this case with. A singular provider in our area of Nipco and there, I think there are six or seven providers throughout Indiana, but they all have that similar. Monopoly and the way that municipal governments. Uh, have some oversight and regulation of. Municipal utilities that are privately owned is through our, um.[1600.68]